All right, I'm gonna call the Finance Committee meeting to order for Monday, September the 9th, 2019. First item on the agenda is Resolution 105-19, and my understanding is we will be removing that from the agenda, so no need... Well, actually, I think Mr. Woodruff, you have some... An update on when this will come back to us?
Yeah, this... We didn't get any bids, and, you know, it's very... It's a very tough time. Everybody's got work, so it's hard to get people to bid on projects. We need to get bidders on this, so we're going to pull it, come back, put it in our... In November, when we do our bids for next year, we'll put it back on, try to get bids for next year.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you for that update.
And also we'll be pulling 111.
Okay.
As a companion piece.
Very good. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Resolution 106-19. That's a resolution to amend the Law Director's budget, specifically line items associated with the VAALA Fund 225. Law Director Allyn is not here, but I believe it's a different prosecutor being paid a different rate. Requires kind of like different math in the VAALA grant fund. So, any changes of the 5,100 line item expenses requires council approval. And Clerk Sandy, maybe did I misstate anything there?
We had a prosecutor leave, and the new prosecutor that went into that position has made more money than the one that vacated the position, so therefore it was in our budget and just had it had to be moved over to the VAALA. So you are correct, just a little bit more explanation.
Perfect. There's no rush on this.
No, you can go three readings.
Okay. Any questions on this? Again, it's just the council rule that anytime we move 5,100s, we need to approve that. So, I'll ask Mr. McDaniel to be my second on that, please?
Yes.
We will go three readings on 106-19. Next item I have on the agenda is Resolution 107-19. That's a resolution to appropriate $90,000 for fire department planned and unplanned retirements, FMLA staffing issues, and additional overtime. This is coming through the Safety Committee. Mr. Hall?
Yes, actually, as I understand, there are two pieces of money, the $90,000 from fire, police and fire, and then another $41,000 from the fire levy. And I think your summary kind of hits the major high points, and the chief is here, so...
Yes. I can speak quickly to the need. We are sitting at staffing of 66 as of today. We budgeted 70. We've been short, well, in fact, since Assistant Chief Matlin retired since February. So we've had five leave. We replaced one of those five. We also have two on injury right now, so the overtime's been very high, and it's been very high unfortunately all year. So this number that I'm asking for, I think, will be enough to suffice the rest of the year, and I hopefully will not have to come back. The $90,000 is for the general fund, the 350. The other portion is for the 352 account.
So if we're understaffed, then we logically have some offsets in other 5,100 accounts.
That is correct, Councilman. A entry-level firefighter medic comes in at $56,000 a year, so we are four short right now, so you're saving there, salary plus you're saving insurance. So there are savings in the salary and those items, but you're seeing a higher increase with the overtime.
Perfect. Questions for Chief Ward on this? Mr. Hall, your pleasure on this?
Two readings.
Two readings? All right. So we'll go two readings on 107... And who's your second? Mr. Woodruff?
That would be Jerry.
All right. So two readings on 107-19. Next item I have on the agenda is 108-19. That's a resolution to appropriate monies received from the city auction and a state grant for SRT vests into the Police Department Fund 247. Auditor Nettles knows my head's about ready to explode right now, but we will continue with this piece of legislation. Mr. Hall?
So this is money in, money out, and it looks like Chief Peeler is up, so I'm gonna defer to him to talk about the specifics.
Yeah, the specifics on this, we filed for a Bureau Workers' Comp grant through the state. It was just for this year, and we got $9,292 and change to buy SRT vests, which are different than our normal on-duty vests. It's a different type of vest. We get federal funds reimbursed for all our on-duty vests, so this wouldn't apply. So we've gotten that now, but now we need to actually pay for the vests, and that's what the $9,292 is. The other money is auction funds coming in. We had replaced a blower motor on the old boiler for about $7,700 earlier in the year, and then we forward raised the price of our Cruisers, about $4,000 a Cruiser, so we moved some money around earlier in the year, and now I need to actually move money back around to cover the shortfalls in those budget items.
Questions for the chief? Yes?
I'm sorry. Did you... How many vests? I'm sorry, I don't know if you said the number. How many?
I want to say it was seven. I'd have to get you a real count. These vests normally run about $1,800 to $2,000 a piece. They don't have the same physical... They don't have the same capabilities as the vests like officers wear on the street. They're a different type.
Further questions? Mr. Hall, your timing?
Since it's money in, money out, we'd like to suspend and move forward and pass this tonight.
Okay.
And you're the... Gonna be the second on that.
Yeah, I'm the second on that. Okay, so we will ask for suspension on 108-19. Thank you, chief. Next item I have on tonight's agenda is 110-19.
We actually had... There was a second motion that was part of the... That was related to 108. Pardon me?
I'm sorry?
Got distracted. There is a... There's a second motion that's associated with this, 109.
Yeah.
On 19.
Yes.
I've got a number drawn here. Okay. Yeah, all right, let me read... Let me introduce 109 here real quick, and then you're talking about the dare piece?
Yes, sir. Should be dare reimbursement grant money.
I wonder why you weren't leaving the podium? So, the next item is Resolution 109-19. That's the drug use prevention grant in the amount of $18,316. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, since the chief's here, I'm gonna let him explain it, but again, it's money in, money out, and we're gonna ask to suspend.
Yeah, this is a dare reimbursement grant money we get for when our officers essentially taught dare in the schools and projects of that nature. What I want to do with it is move it over to civilian salaries. I would like to hire a contact early. We've got an early retirement in January, and I might have another contact that leaves us to become a police officer. I've got two currently on our list. Last year, we had lost two... Well, in November of '17, we lost two contacts at the same time. That's a high-stress job. It's got a high learning curve to learn, so if I can get one hired in October, maybe November, she'll be almost up to speed by the time we have our first retirement, and I don't have two missing at the same time. It's such a small unit, there are only 12 employees there, that with two gone, it stresses everybody else out with coverage in those types of issues.
All right. Questions for the chief? Mr. Hall?
You know, we can go either way. We can suspend or go two readings. I'm gonna defer to you guys.
You can pick.
You know what? I'll suspend.
All right. He picks suspend. And Mr. Woodruff, I believe you're second on this? All right. Any... Seeing no further questions, we will suspend on 109-19. Next item is 110-19. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to go out for bids and contracting for mowing of city cemeteries. This is coming through Public Works, Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, this is just the annual piece for next year's mowing contracts, and we can go three readings. Mrs. Bobbitt will be my second.
Seems a little earlier than usual.
Trying to... He's kind of splitting them up a little bit. I think he had mentioned... What? Oh, it switched up on me. I'm sorry, Ms. Bobbitt. Ms. Teener is the even ones, and I'm still reading the odd on my paper.
Wow, they're fighting over the second. I like it.
My... It was Mr. Stone's fault, 'cause mine said 109, and I scratched it out, 110.
I messed it up. That's right.
I already scratched her out on my paper.
All right. So, what were we saying?
Why are we doing it early?
No, what were you saying?
For... Okay, Ms. Teener's gonna second.
You're out of order. This whole place is out of order.
Yes. We are... We are doing it a little earlier. Forest rose. Mr. Hens wants to split in half. One contractor really can't keep up with that, so with an additional bid out there, he wanted to get started a little early.
Excellent. Very good. Questions? All right, seeing none, we will go three readings on 110-19. Thank you, sir. Next item I have is 112-19. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to renegotiate... I'm sorry. Negotiate and enter into land purchases for right-of-way dedication and temporary work easements as necessary for the Edie Road Safety Improvement Project. This is coming through the Service Committee. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Well, thank you. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, or...
Mitch is back there.
Or Mitch. Mitch, can you speak on this tonight, please?
Yeah, so this is a resolution for Paul to negotiate and enter into the land contracts for Edie Road. I know we've spoke about this previously, and we just recently had a project kickoff meeting for the acquisition phase on Edie Road, and we needed to get this in place so that when we start bringing in all these different lands and things, that we'll probably do one ordinance at the end to accept all these lands, but this is just the initial piece for us to start negotiating those land purchases and acquisition.
Okay, and you want this to come through the Service Committee, not the Public Works Committee?
I don't know how it got to the Service Committee.
That's what I'm questioning.
It doesn't matter.
I mean, it doesn't matter, but...
Yeah.
Okay. So would you like three readings, or do you need to do this in two?
Can we do this in two readings, please?
Yes, we can.
Questions for Mr. Nolan? I think he briefed us on this a couple weeks ago. Yes, Mayor Scheffler?
I'd just like to make a comment that it's not the city doing the actual negotiations. It's the state, and they have quite a process for doing this, as you might guess, which we spent an hour and a half, two hours discussing at kickoff meeting the other day. So eventually, it will come to us to approve, and then pass legislation. So Paul's not gonna be out there...
I'm sorry.
Hammering away with the property owners. It's gonna be the state.
Well, the way he talks, I don't think we'd ever get this wrapped up anyway, so thank goodness for that. So, thank you. Any other comments on this?
Thanks, Mitch.
All right. Seeing none, we will go two readings on 112-19. Who's your second?
Ms. Teener.
Oh, look, they're playing nice now, after they fought over the second there.
I just saw my name.
All right. Do you have any departmental updates this evening? Everyone, reach to the podium.
They're quieting.
Huh?
Council members, I'm Jeff Davis, if you don't remember me. I guess someone wanted an update tonight on the Building Department and where we're We've done quite a few things, I feel like, in the last year and a half, but I just got a few highlights here. We have some new software now, Building Department software. It has a lot of new features versus our old software. We got a lot of new features that are good for the contractors, especially homeowners, people doing projects. And our upgrades saved us a lot of money from what we used to have that would've cost a lot more money if we would've used the old software and paid for upgrades. I've reviewed the residential plan review, which is done in-house by our staff. I've set up a new timeline, two weeks, to get everything turned around and sent out. Three weeks is our max, but two weeks is our target now. The state gives us four weeks, so we're gonna try to cut that in half. I know some people have had complaints, probably, I don't know if you've heard them, about commercial plan review. It's out of house, it goes to a contractor, the state gives us four weeks for that, and all plan reviewers, commercial plan reviewers, have been behind two weeks, sometimes three. Ours was two, but right now, they're back on track to within four weeks. We take payments now with credit cards, either over the phone or in person at the counter. That was... That's something new within probably a year. As far as inspections go, we always have a 24-hour minimum turnaround on those. Sometimes we can... If we can, we do them sooner. We have a cutoff at 2:30 the previous day to request, but if we're not busy, we'll call them and say we'll come out anyway, so we sped that up a little bit. In the past, if you didn't make the cutoff, you didn't get an inspection, even if there wasn't a whole lot of work to do, so that's changed. We accept email signatures on forms now, save people from having to come to the office. We'll scan, let them scan, send stuff, email them to us. I talked to Stephanie Hall about that to make sure we're allowed to do that, and we are on most everything, unless it needs notarized or something like that. Consultations for customers used to be a fee for that. We don't do that anymore in most cases. Contractors are putting together bids a lot of times on existing buildings, and they don't know what may pop up after they get a permit, and we come in and say we need to do extra work if they don't have in their price or their bid. So we've changed that now. We'll go out for free, even if they don't have a permit, at least once, we'll give them a free one. And then homeowners, we try to be more helpful now with homeowners and their self projects that they want to, like build their own deck or even do a room addition. We try to keep things fast with that. A lot of times, plans are lacking or they need amendments, so we're making it a priority to get ahold of them right away. Let them send us letters and writing and emails and just print those off, timestamp those to help them get their projects moving quicker, but those are the key items I thought you might want to hear about. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or...
Yes, Mrs. Teener.
I know you said you're within 24 hours, and that you at least go out and inspect, but how long does it take for, like, to get a permit? I know that there are some things they have to make amendments, but typically...
That's really hard to answer. I mean, we're trying to be proactive, be more helpful. Before, it was pretty much we just waited for them to supply us information. Now, I've kind of directed them to reach out, tell them what they're missing, and help them along so that they're not spinning their wheels and getting frustrated trying to keep, you know, giving us stuff that we don't need, so...
I know that when you go in, they have a... You have a big board there that has all the paperwork for how... What you need to do and this and that. Can they find that online, too, or do they have to come in and get that? That is online on the...
Yeah, I try to direct most people, if they have questions on the phone. If I'm there, and the staff's supposed to help them, too, just go ahead and pull up the website and point them where they need to go, because it's kind of a pretty thick website for forms and... Because projects have registration for contractors, and there's commercial, there's residential, there's zoning, so we're trying to be a lot more helpful now. I'm hearing good feedback out there, so...
Further questions? Mrs. Bobbitt?
I might have one, or maybe it'll turn into three. So, somebody wants to build a new home, 'cause I think every one of us around the table have heard, "Your building permits are just too expensive." So explain to... Explain to the public what all you're paying for, for the permits. You know, what permits? You know, water, tap? Is that a brief que... Is that something you can answer briefly, or not?
Yeah, I think sometimes we're the messenger, because we collect monies for other departments, the enterprise funds and things, and that adds up to a whole lot of money. So like a new house, a typical single-family house is anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000. So when they see that, they have sticker shock. Of course, we're the ones collecting it at our department. I mean, it's all there spelled out, what monies go where, but I think that it's a sticker shock thing, because our part is minimal. It's probably 15% of the whole thing.
Building Department is minimal.
The actual building Department fees, but we collect for, you know, the enterprise, the gas, the sewer taps, you know, water taps, fire impact fees.
Fire impact fees.
Twenty to fifty, I think, per unit.
I was waiting to hear that one, Randy.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Further questions? Well, very good. We do appreciate the update. That's good information, and, you know, you had... You had many years of sins that you had to correct, so it'll take a while to, you know, to continue to get that positive feedback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further departmental updates?
Hello, I am Amy Hamilton, and I am the new income tax commissioner. I'm on my fourth week, so we have to bear with me. We're in a bit of a helter-skelter up there, going through things. The staff has been great, I have to say. They kind of were left in a bit of a chaos, and they have pulled together. We're going through procedures, we're going through policies, and they have really made the transition. I know when Bob was there, he had them helping him as well, so I just want to say the staff has been... Has been well. From our perspective, we're looking at where we can improve, and that's not a short list in that department. The first thing that we are going to do is we're going to be streamlining our billing, which usually is a monthly or quarterly statement. We're going out to an outside vendor that is going to give us a nice little chunk of change and savings, and it's going to make things a little more timely with getting to our taxpayers, and it's going to allow for some efficiencies with our auditors themselves. It'll free them up from the monotony of forwarding, mailing, and sorting and all of that. We are also going to be evaluating our tax tool, which is our online e-filing tool. And if any of you have used that tool, you're probably not happy with it. It's very un-user friendly, and our current vendor is not very helpful. So you'll see later this fall, we will be discontinuing their services as well and looking for... In another venue. I've been reaching out to other tax commissioners. I've touched base with Dublin, Newark. We've talked with some other folks in Reynoldsburg as far as what they're doing, what not to do, just trying to get a grasp on to make sure we're all headed in the right direction. I think, what else? The biggest thing is, I would like to let you all know, I'm coming in a couple weeks to bring some legislation. We have... Our software is over 20 years old, and if any of you have asked for a report from my department, you will know that that doesn't usually happen, because it is very antiquated and very inefficient, and to run any type of analytics is a disaster. So I'm going to be bringing legislation to bring us into the modern world, to allow for us some efficiencies, some productivity. We will have a module that's going to allow us to scan documents, scan returns, bring things in, make it much easier to file your return with a new module online as well. That way, if you call and need to look at something in your file, we have it right there at our fingertips versus trying to go and look through the walls of filing cabinets that we have now, so...
Well, let me ask the obvious question before you go on. Will I be able to get a report?
Yes.
So if I want to know how many taxpayers we have that are living in the city that are, you know, basically paying from somebody in the Franklin County area, you'll be able to get us that information?
Yes. Yes.
Yay!
Drill down reports. That was the priority.
Sold! Take as much money as you need.
Seventy-eight percent of the city's revenue comes through our department, and so it is imperative that we can tell where this money's coming, where it's going, who's sending it in, who's not sending it in, which is a bigger problem that we're seeing right now, who's late in sending it in that we're not charging late fees for, or maybe we're... Maybe being nice, oh, we'll give penalty and interest waivers. We're really taking a look at what we're not following, trying to have everybody in the office on the same page, following the stipulations of House Bill 5, which was passed in 2016, and making sure we're compliant with those things as well, so...
So...
Question? Yeah, Mr. Hall?
Do you have an estimate of how much revenue we might be able to recover or add based on some of the inefficiencies in our current software?
I can't tell you that. I can tell you there's well over a million and a half dollars in uncollected funds. Now, that is a seven-year period, and we only have technically a three-year look back to where we can stake a claim within court. That doesn't mean we can't try to go after it, just as if we... Seven, you know, six years, six or seven years back, push came to shove, we would not have any legal standing, so... We still send the letters and still say you owe, but there's an enormous amount of trying to weed through in this software. It just is... It's very difficult to do. It's spreadsheets and spreadsheets and macros and trying to work with the programs. It's very out of date. It's a DOS program, so...
Mrs. Teener?
Yeah, so you were talking about getting outsourced, the computer, doing this and that software, whatever. Is there anything in this that our IT department can do, or...
This is the software... It's our current CMI software now, and it'll be an upgrade to what... I think they... We read they have like... There's like 78 different municipalities that are using it now, and they have a module or a component that is a tax tool, and it works with the scanning program as well. So it'll be easier for employers to upload their W2s through our portal, which they can't do now with our current system, and the IT just... They're not... This is outside of their realm.
Do you check, though, with IT before you go out and do anything to make sure there isn't something that they can do?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Further questions? Mrs. Bobbitt?
Well, you answered my one. You said that it's... It's a new module, but it's current with what you have. Will you be going out for bid?
I was told we did not need to go out for bid because it's specialized and it is an upgrade of our current system.
Okay.
Not very many people want to jump into the income tax software game.
Well, you have... You have a lot of industries that's like that.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Mayor Scheffler?
I just wanted to reiterate something that Amy said. City of Lancaster has never charged penalty and interest on late payments or non-payments. In effective immediately, we will be doing that. So if you hear that's an issue, it's been allowed by the Ohio Revised Code for years, and going forward, we will be doing it.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Wolfinger?
If you don't mind, an answer to one of the questions. What are we gonna capture? What are we missing? And with the new system, it'll give us better analytics to find out. For instance, if you work out of town, you live in Lancaster, and your company you work for does not do withholding, then you're gonna have to pay that yourself, and so there's a lot of people out there, and quite frankly, we don't know who they are. But there's some metrics that we... With the system, we can find out perhaps who should be filing, who's not filing, and it's critical, and there's people who do not file tax returns, and hopefully, the new system will allow us to better capture that. And it's a real challenge for the department, and it's a challenge for the city, because we're missing revenue.
That's bad.
It is bad. Action.
Mrs. Bobbitt, you want to ask another question?
I just want to follow up to what the mayor said.
Still another question.
It is a question, but now it's his question. So, um... So folks, is it a law that they have to file quarterly? Because you have a lot of people who only file at the end of the year. So are these the folks that you will be charging interest for if they don't file quarterly? So I would... If that's something that we're gonna start doing?
Yes.
Because I know a lot of people who only file. I mean, you file your federal once a year, you file your state once a year, and usually, you file your city once a year. once a year, you file your state once a year, and usually, you file your city once a year. So, if it is something that we're going to start doing because they don't pay it quarterly, I would hope that we make that well-known on the front of the Eagle Gazette paper, because I know a lot of people that file yearly.
But if you file a federal and a state return annually, you're required to make estimated payments, a certain percentage of your tax if you don't have withholding, and the city operates under the same rules. We just haven't been levying the penalties and interest.
I'm just saying, just make sure we tell everybody.
The bulk, the bulk of that will be our businesses. I mean, there are some individuals that have...
Well, there's quite a few people that will work in Columbus.
That do quarterly, correct. And those, we could suggest if you are somebody who's already receiving a W-2, whether you're able to make adjustments, you know, with your employer to increase your withholdings there.
There are a lot of employers in Columbus, Ohio, that will only take out one city.
Right.
I'm not one of those people, so I'm not, I get both of mine taken out. But there's a lot of people that only get one city taken out.
Yes.
And then they file at the end of the year.
Yes.
And they pay their Lancaster.
Well, the way it works is, well, two things. It is, yes, it is the law that you need to file quarterly estimates if you do not withhold the amount. Now, either you withhold ninety percent of what you guess your best tax is going to be for the current year, or it's going to be one hundred, based on one hundred percent of your prior year's tax liability. So, what we do, well, we haven't been doing, but what we will do is come the fourth quarter, if you have not, if you've paid your first, you paid your second, you didn't pay your third, but you paid your fourth, we'll take a look at it and see. But if you didn't pay your third, you're still going to get penalized for the interest. If you've made the total tax liability that's due in the fourth quarter, you will not get charged late, and you will not get charged penalty. We ca, the interest is the part that is, we really cannot get rid of. That is more of a law than anything else. The other two things that we have a little more wiggle room.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think her point is just, you know, people have had it their way for so long that, you know, the change will be a shock to some folks. So, the best way you can make that public is, is a good thing. Further questions? So, what was your two biggest surprises, well, outside of that one?
[laughing]
Well, I was going to say three, but that's, you know, that, that one is probably, has to be one of the biggest. What are the biggest surprises you discovered when you walked into that role?
There is a lot of work in that office. There's a lot of work. There's a lot of work to be done, and they crank out a lot. I mean, there's, like, we've talked about, there's a lot of things that we could do to look for the nonfilers, but just the day-to-day operations, they bust their tails off. And it's, it's an enormous amount of taxpayers, it's an enormous amount of trying to make sure things are correct, they're entered correct. We upload a lot of information now through the banks and through, via ACH, through files we import. So, it's a lot of time of making sure what we're importing matches what we have, whether that's from the state, or whether it's from a Pay Corps or anybody else. It's, it's just, it's a lot of work.
So, the new, the upgrade to your module, that create some efficiencies in that work?
Yes.
Good.
We will be able to import W-2s and post them to accounts. Right now, it's all manual. And I can tell you from ADP, we got a stack like this the other day. So, that, just in manpower alone, will save, to be able to look at some of the other things that we need to be looking at, and matching, whether it's looking at utility records, or what's through the state tapes and things like that, to be able to try to find some of these people who aren't filing.
Okay. Well, we could, I could sit here and ask you another dozen questions, but I'm not going to. So, in the absence of other questions, we appreciate the update, and we'll look forward to, do you have a ballpark cost on the new upgraded application?
Right now, it's sitting at around a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for all three pieces.
Okay.
Like I said, with changing out some of the vendors that I'm doing now, that's going to be a annual savings of a little over thirty-seven thousand dollars by dropping the other two. So, we're looking at about three point nine years as far as a return on our investment.
The payback?
The payback.
Okay. Well, very good. We appreciate the update, and we look forward to hearing from you again. Thanks a lot, and good luck.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Further updates? Seeing none, I'll defer now to President Oo for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the pulling of temporary resolution 105-19, we'll also be pulling temporary resolution 111-19. This was put in as a precaution in case it was necessary to increase the authorization that is not needed, and so we're pulling that legislation. The only other item we have then to deal with before council meeting begins is 94-19, which we are amending, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schoonover on this one.
We're just changing on this 94-19 to 94-19 star. It's just changing a couple account numbers, some numerical differences, errors, and that's it.
Okay. Questions on the amendment that we're planning?
Do you find this piece of legislation still remain as the original?
Um, yes. Do you? Does it float your boat, Mr. Schoonover?
It does.
Okay, floats his boat. We're good then. All right, so we're amending that, and we'll move forward then. That's all I have for tonight. I'll turn it back to the chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other items for finance? Seeing none, I undertake a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We are adjourned.
It is 6:34. We will begin the regular meeting of Lancaster City Council at 6:40.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over fifteen years at this location and twenty-seven years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster, and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster, or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, it is an honor to serve. We're thankful for this opportunity to be here tonight and for the work that is set before us. We pray that you would be with us, help us to rightly divide this work, and to do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Lancaster. Father, today, as we move toward remembering the events of 9/11, we ask that you would continue to be with those who were impacted in the immediate areas of those terrorist attacks. We pray that you would continue to be with our country, its leadership, and continue to be with our first responders and military men and women who continue to run toward the fire as we're running away from it. May you bless them and keep them, we pray. In Jesus's name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, please make sure your microphones are back on. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Groff?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance tonight. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated August 26, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated September 4, 2019 regarding the, the audit of 2018 pension submitted by Auditor Tricia Nettles. Email dated September 4, 2019 regarding their request to withdraw temporary resolution 111-19 submitted by Stormwater Engineer Denise Cruz.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
Yes, there are. Series of emails regarding the City of Lancaster fiscal year 2018 pension engagement and entrance information submitted by David Shook, Assistant Auditor, Auditor of State Keith Farber. Email dated September 5, 2019 regarding streets, alleys, utilities, public services code, temporary ordinance 1319 submitted by Michael Zerilli, Vice President, Assistant General Counsel for Charter Communication. Email dated September 6, 2019 regarding the City of Lancaster's proposed right-of-way ordinance, temporary 1319 submitted by John F. Kelly, counsel to AT&amp;T. And finally, a notice to the legislative authority of a new liquor license to Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado, Inc., doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill 3433, located at 1248 East Main Street, Lancaster, Ohio, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time, Lancaster City Council sets time aside for the voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address city council on any item or issue they would like. If you're interested in addressing Lancaster City Council tonight, we ask that you come forward to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while members of city council may choose to do so at a later portion of tonight's meeting, they will not respond to your questions or comments at this time. Additionally, in accordance with the rules of council, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, sir. Feel free to come along, sir. You can go ahead and begin your comments, and then just sign in afterwards.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, Council President and Council members. I'm Jason Perduchik, Director of Government Affairs for AT&amp;T Ohio. I'd like to speak on a temporary ordinance 13-19 specifically regarding the city's regulation of the right-of-way. It's my understanding, and actually, I just heard, that most of you received an email last Friday, so I'll keep my comments brief. We certainly understand the city's desire to regulate the right-of-way, and as far as I know, AT&amp;T has worked well with the city over the years in the construction projects in the right-of-way and elsewhere, and we expect that to continue, obviously. But this is a major overhaul of Lancaster's right-of-way ordinance, and as such, there are concerns that we have in being able to do our work to provide services to our customers in a timely manner. To cite a couple of examples from our letter, section 90 dot, 901 dot 06, dealing with the annual construction and major maintenance plan, is overly broad. Utilities cannot foresee the work that they may be doing in the city that far in advance. Moreover, the mapping data concerning the location of facilities would reveal the precise location of AT&amp;T cable facilities and other equipment that would create an undue security risk. This is not information that AT&amp;T would be in a position to share. I would also like to note the fee provisions in the ordinance and the fees to be assessed under it are nonspecific at this time, so we really don't know the cost that this would add to doing business in the city of Lancaster. Our customers want the latest technology delivered to their homes and businesses, and we are concerned the provisions in this ordinance may obstruct us in providing that service here in Lancaster. We respectfully request that the ordinance be tabled so that AT&amp;T and other utility providers may have the opportunity to meet with the proper city officials to discuss possible revisions that would be beneficial to everyone. We look forward to continuing to work with the city of Lancaster, and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, thank you all for being here this evening. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are four. Finance committee meeting minutes for September 9, 2019, submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Special Public Works Committee meeting minutes for July 12, 2019, and the regular Public Works Committee meeting minutes for August 9, 2019, submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Safety Committee meeting minutes for August 14, 2019, submitted by Mr. Hall. And finally, the Code Enforcement and Zoning meeting minutes for August 5, 2019, submitted by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution 94-19.
A resolution to amend their certificate with the county auditor and appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the cemetery fund 270, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend temporary resolution 94-19 by replacing it with temporary resolution 94-19 star, as given to the clerk in writing prior to the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend temporary resolution 94-19 and replace it with temporary resolution 94-19 star, as given to the clerk in writing prior to tonight's meeting. Comments, Mr. Schoonover?
We're just replacing a couple incorrect account numbers on this piece, so no bones changes, just a couple account numbers.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 94-19 star passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 95-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required by, required for the Edie Road Safety Improvement Project PID 108470, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 95-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 95-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
Just briefly, this is another piece in moving our Edie Road Improvement Project forward. So, hopefully, we'll get through these and not have so many more coming forward, but we'll see.
Yes, we will. Thank you very much, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 95- We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 95-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
Just briefly, this is another piece in moving our Edie Road Improvement Project forward, so hopefully we'll get through these and not have so many more coming forward, but we'll see.
Yes, we will. Thank you very much, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 95-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 96-19.
A resolution of consent for Bridge Inspection Program Services and to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a Bridge Inspection Program Services Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for PID Number 109334, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 96-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 96-19. Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, this is an agreement between the city and the State Department of Transportation to allow for them to do our bridge inspections throughout the city.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 96-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 99-19.
A resolution to amend the official thoroughfare plan for the City of Lancaster, Ohio, adopted in January 2004, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 99-19. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 99-19. Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, City Engineer Nolan explained this to us a couple meetings ago, but it is just an update to something that's 15 years old to deal with some of our infrastructure problems that we have in giving the city a little more room to work with everything that they need to in the right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Yes, Mr. Woodard.
I have a concern now we've had the comment here from AT&amp;T, maybe we need the cables to give a chance to hear from utilities to see if there are any problems with what we have proposed here.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Is your microphone on, just to be sure?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, further comment or discussion on the motion to pass? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I believe the speaker's comments earlier were directed at ordinance 1319 and not at this one. Okay.
Yeah, I believe that's accurate.
Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion on 99-19? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 99-19 passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 102-19.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Fairfield County Budget Commission and authorize the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 102-19. Temporary Resolution 104-19.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of agreement and bylaws of the Ohio Transit Risk Pool, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on Temporary Resolution 104-19. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 106-19.
A resolution to amend appropriation budgets, then amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the general fund 101 and VAWA fund 225, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is effectively just changing some salary line items for a new hire that is taking over a position as managing the VAWA grant funding, because this person's salary is different than the prior person. We have to move some money around in the 5,100 accounts, which requires council approval. That said, this will be the first of three readings.
First three readings on Temporary Resolution 106-19. Temporary Resolution 107-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, excuse me, in the general fund 101, increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Point 45 Police and Fire Levy Fund 247, amend the certificate with the county auditor, and to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Point 15 Fire Levy Fund 246, offered by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Woodard.
Mr. Hall.
One of two.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 107-19. Temporary Resolution 108-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance, excuse me, in the general fund 101, increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Point 45 Police and Fire Levy Fund 247, amend the certificate with the county auditor, and to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Point 15 Fire Levy Fund 246, offered by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Woodard.
Mr. Hall.
One of two.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 107-19. Temporary Resolution 108-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the general fund 101, increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Point 45 Police and Fire Levy Fund 247, and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, I'd like to ask Chief Pillar to step forward and to discuss this resolution, if you would.
As he's stepping forward, can we have your motion to suspend, please?
Yes, this is basically a money-in, money-out issue, and we would very much appreciate making this a one-reading motion.
He wants you to make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary Numbered 101-19, 108-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 108-19. Chief.
Yeah, good evening, President. Well, this is essentially $13,534 from the city auction that we're going to bring in to cover some bills that we didn't expect earlier in the year, and $9,292, which is a state grant for a bullcoup vest that we were approved of, we put up the matching funds for, and now we need to take that money, so we've got to purchase the vest.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Pillar. Anything further, Mr. Hall?
Not at this time.
Other discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Hall.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary Number 108-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 108-19. Further discussion, Mr. Hall.
Not at this time.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 108-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 99-19.
A resolution to amend the official thoroughfare plan for the City of Lancaster, Ohio, adopted in January 2004, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 99-19. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 99-19. Discussion, Mr. Hall.
I would again like to rely on Chief Pillar to describe this issue.
Chief Pillar.
Good evening, Council. This is a dare reimbursement money that our officers get for materials and time they spend teaching dare. I'd like to put that into our civilian salaries, so we have an upcoming retirement. I'd like to actually hire a communications technician early and get her three months of training, so she's about ready to run on her own when that retirement occurs in January.
Very good. Any questions or further discussion on the motion to suspend? Mr. Hall?
Yes. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion...
Do you have any more on the motion to suspend?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay, other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary Number 109-19.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 109-19. Further discussion, Mr. Hall?
No.
Other discussion this evening? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 109-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 110-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract, I'm sorry, I'm trying to process what Becky wrote for me, and then I'm trying to, excuse me, I messed up. A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for mowing and other landscape maintenance services for the city cemeteries, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 110-19. Temporary Resolution 112-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to negotiate and enter into land purchases for right-of-way dedication and temporary work easements as necessary for the Edie Road Safety Improvement Project, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
This will be the first of two readings.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 112-19. Are there any other resolutions? Yeah. Are there any other resolutions to come before City Council tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Ordinance 13-19.
An ordinance to repeal and replace Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part 9, Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code Title 1, Streets and Sidewalks of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 13-19. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 13-19. Discussion, Mr. Groff.
This is the right-of-way ordinance that we have had before council for some time now. There have been numerous discussions. It was in the hands of an outside law firm. The engineering department, Mitch, did give a presentation on it and talk about it at the last meeting during the second reading. I did receive a phone call at the 11th hour, about 3:00 this afternoon, at AT&amp;T. The gentleman spoke tonight. I don't know whether, I didn't really speak to him much this afternoon. I referred him to the law department on that, so if Randall would like to make any comments, or if Mitch would like to make any comments at this point, I'll leave it up to that.
I mean, I think we can see if anyone has any questions, and then if either of the two of you have comment, we can certainly work our way through that. Are there other questions or comments this evening on this particular legislation?
I mean, this is something that has been a long time in coming, and I would not see a problem with waiting a couple weeks to give a chance for Mitch and the law director maybe to meet with different groups if they wanted to, including AT&amp;T.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Is there further discussion on the motion to pass? I saw Ms. Bobbitt first.[1430.02]
Have, I mean, they've done a lot of work on this. It was before the Law Committee for quite some time, and it was with the attorney for quite some time, and I appreciate the thorough work that you did, and that's why I'm going to be voting for this tonight. We don't need to put it, we don't need to put it on hold.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Don't put your hand back up, Mr. Stoughton. There you go.
Oh, I thought you were going to go.
I sure was.
Well, yeah, I mean, my, my concern is we run in here at the 11th hour, and this has been a very public process. It's not like, not like we did this in a cloak and dagger back room here. So, I suspect that, you know, I'm going to continue to support it. We've done a lot of work. We've been very open and public about this. So, to come in at the 11th hour and expect us to, you know, put on the brakes, in two weeks' time, Mr. Woodard, no offense, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to find out any new information that's going to change most of the minds around this table.
Thank you very much. I, I am, yes, Miss Teener.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, did you speak with this gentleman today? Is there a reason why they waited so long to, because this has been going for a real long time?
Law Director Almond.
No, we did not get a chance to, to speak the gentleman with AT&amp;T, and I, I guess what I can say to council is that, first off, I mean, the right-of-way ordinance has been stated already as something that we have been working on for some time, and the problem, of course, for Lancaster is, you know, we didn't have a lot of, it was somewhat of an informal process, I guess, for lack of a better term, and, and we definitely need, and I think council appreciates it, we need something in place to regulate and maintain the right-of-way. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a finite resource for us, and not only AT&amp;T, but every other utility, including our own, you know, have to be treated fairly, and there has to be continuity in that process so that we can basically provide access for AT&amp;T and other utility companies to do exactly what was stated here tonight, which is, you know, provide services or whatever to citizens in our community. You know, we reached out, Chris Miller with Ice Miller is who we used to basically get the document that you have for you. We chose him because he has particular expertise in this area. I can tell you that this ordinance in, in almost the exact same form, some tweaks or whatever, for Lancaster, but as far as, you know, the important things legally, it's my understanding this is in place in Reynoldsburg, Hannah, Upper Arlington, Hilliard, Grove City, Whitehall, Dublin, there, this is a little bit different, but same basic document, New Albany, Athens, Kettering, Monroe, Marysville, Akron, Cuyahoga Falls, and I did see that, you know, letters from, from AT&amp;T did go out to say Cuyahoga Falls last year who adopted this ordinance. We're not going to, for us, I think it's actually, to put this in place is good for the utility companies because they all get treated fairly, not to pick on AT&amp;T in any fashion, but one of the things that was stated in their letter that I looked at was, you know, put in this, a general waiver provision, so that the city engineer would have the, the ability to waive fees and things like that for good cause shown. You know, to me, you, you don't want to write a law like that, I can tell you. You don't want to write, you want it to be objective, not subjective, because, you know, when you put it, and this is no offense to Mitch or anyone else, but when you put the law into the individual hands of someone to decide, I'm going to give this person this, but I'm not going to give them this, and you take out that equal treatment within the law, you harm everybody, you know? I mean, so, so that would just be, in my opinion, something that would be foolish to do, because it allows them for disparate treatment. So, I believe that, you know, through the process we've used with this and gone through with this, and it's been a long process, again, I think the utility companies are very familiar with what we are looking to adopt, because, again, all the communities around us that are already utilizing, you know, these particular standards, these particular rules, and that's why it would be my suggestion to you that, you know, we, we put this in place. The other thing, too, is, as you recall, not only do we want to regulate, you know, what we have in the right-of-way now and make sure that there, there's space and everything there for everyone, it's also to deal with, you know, the future and what the needs are and what technology brings forward to us or whatever in the years ahead, again, to make sure that it all lives co-positively within the finite resources of the right-of-way we have.
Thank you, Mr. Almond. Is there any further discussion or other questions on this? See the engineer trying to make his way to the podium here. Mr. Nolan.
Sneaking up here.
Yes.
I, I want to, I want to echo Randall's comments and just add to a couple of those. Obviously, you know, these, the right-of-way is a public-owned resource that is limited, and for, for those of you that aren't in the engineering and construction fields, you know, I deal with this almost daily of the things that happen and the, and the stuff that's beneath your feet as you walk down the street. You have no idea what's lines and, and the web that is underneath your feet as you walk down the right-of-way. We deal with this almost daily on various projects, and, and to tell you the truth, I, I, I understand, and, and we work well with a whole host of utilities in the right-of-way. It's, it's not AT&amp;T, it's, it's the Columbia Gas of Ohio's of the world, and, you know, the Verizons, and, and probably 20 different utilities that are in our right-of-ways. And, and what I want to say is, is that will continue even with this, this, this document. However, this gives us a management document that we've never had before, a way to manage the right-of-way, and, and I've told Cecil this, you know, I've put in a lot of work over the past two years, when it started with mobility and Senate Bill 331, and then House Bill 478, you know, for the past two years, I've put in a lot of time reading through pages and pages of, of documents in this right-of-way ordinance, and to tell you the truth, if, if this passes tonight, we have a lot of work still to do. There is a lot of work to do, and it's in my anticipation, I know we're here at the beginning of September, and it, I've told Cecil, I guess this is where the really heavy lifting starts, once this thing passes. This is when the heavy lifting really gets going, and we need this time, and, and we need, we need this to happen so that Cecil can get things going, so that when, in my anticipation, this thing really is going to come to fruition on January 1st of 2020. We've got some work to get done. There's a lot of things to just get in place, and he's been working on that for the past few months, but I'm asking council that, that you would pass this tonight so that we can continue our work, and it's just something that, that we've put a lot of time and effort into, and I would appreciate that, so.
Thank you, Engineer Nolan. Further discussion on the motion to pass? I think Mr. Nolan is selling himself short. I was chair of the Law Committee when we started talking about this almost two years ago, and so it's been longer than two years that City Council has been working on this particular document and process, and I appreciate the work of the Law Director's office and of the Engineers' office. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
No.
Temporary ordinance 13-19 passes 8 to 1. We have no ordinances for second or first reading. Are there other ordinances to come before City Council this evening? Hearing none. We do have temporary ordinance 11-19 tabled. It will remain on the table until after the November election. Is there any unfinished business this evening? If not, is there any new business this evening? Yes, Miss Teener.
Ever since I've been on council, there was a lady that would come every year, and she would do Constitution Week or Constitution Day, and I don't know how long she's been coming. I don't know if I have mine.
I've got one more.
Yeah. Well, I would always give mine to, like, a teacher or something to, with her class, but it was Ann Kitts Miller, and she passed away. I think it was September the 2nd. I don't know if people knew, and she was kind of a fixture every year.
She was a city councilman.
Yeah, one time she was city council.
Yeah, she was on city council, and I just wanted to give my thoughts and prayers, and she was a very good teacher and embarrassed us every year because I couldn't remember this by heart, so I have to read it. I think it was the fifth grade was when I learned this, but I just, my thoughts and prayers go out to her family. She was a great lady, and I believe her, the service is the, 20th, it's on a Friday at 11 o'clock, and I think there's visitation before, so if anybody wants to send cards or thoughts or anything, that would be nice to do. How many years has she done this? Do you remember? I mean, because you've been on-
Constitution Week? She did it pretty much every year.
I wonder how many years she-
Came every year.
Yeah, she came every year, and then the years that she was on council, she actually, I don't know if she participated with them, but they were certainly here, so I assure you, I have like 15 of these, and it's going to be, it's going to be odd here when we don't see her at the podium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to, a lot of people didn't know that. I was very shocked. I talked about her one day, and then the next day I, I read the obituaries every morning. That's the first thing I do when I wake up, and I saw that, and that really just shocked me. I, I was very saddened to see that, so.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Miss Teener. Yes, that's very thoughtful. I appreciate you bringing that up. Yes, Mr. Hall.
You know, it's, it's not unheard of for legislative bodies to pass resolutions of commendation. I don't know that, being relatively, well, really new to this body, I don't know that, whether or not that's something that we typically do, but it's something that we might want to consider moving forward. It's, we might not be ready for that at this meeting, but someone of Ann Kitts Miller's stature, given her contributions to our community, would certainly be somebody worthy of that kind of, of a, of recognition by council.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Hall, and I think that while we won't be ready by the 20th, we can put something together for consideration at the next council meeting and then get that to her family.
I would work on that. I would take that on.
So, Miss Teener can work on that, then, perhaps with the mayor's office, and we'll get something together that we can all pass here and sign and get to the family. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Further new business this evening? All right, then we'll ask clerk to read the announcement of scheduled meetings.
Upcoming schedule of council meetings, September 23rd at 6:30 p.m., October 14th at 6:30 p.m., both here in council chambers. There are no special meetings. Upcoming committee meetings, Service Committee, September 13th at 7:30 a.m. at the Gas Department Conference Room, Water Water Pollution Control, September 18th at 7 a.m. at the Water Water Pollution Control Conference Room, Economic Development, September 19th at 7:30 a.m. at the City Hall Second Floor Conference Room, Finance, September 23rd at 6 p.m. here in council chambers, IT Telecom, October 3rd at 7:30 a.m. at the City Hall Second Floor Conference Room, Code Enforcement, October 7th at 7:30 a.m. at the Second Floor Conference Room in City Hall, Law Committee, October 9th at 9 a.m. at the Fairfield County Municipal Court Community Room, and finally, finally, Public Works, October the 11th at 7:30 a.m. at the Lancaster Public Transit Conference Room, and all of these are listed on the city webpage calendar.
Thank you very much, Clerk Sandy. I'll just note by my count, that gives us six more meetings this legislative year, and you know what that means, Mr. Mayor. It's almost budget time. Sense the excitement, Mr. Stoughton? Can you feel it?
Feel it in the air.
I feel it, too. Yeah, it's going to be great.
I'm better than football.
I don't know about that. All right. Are there any bills this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Is there a need for an executive session? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
A motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
You too.
Don't forget to sign your legislative.